All right, I'm going to, in lack of video that shows up and hope that it mysteriously decides to start representing, I'm gonna call the June 23 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can I please have a roll call attendance?
Tim Bonin, present.
Dave Cortez, present.
Al Davis, present.
I, Hughes, present.
Kevin Morris, present. I do have a couple of announcements under Chairman's announcements. The first one is I'd like to acknowledge that as of June 4, 2020, the Douglas Police Department has become an officially accredited police department, according to the Police Accreditation Commission. So I know a lot of hard work went into that from our chief, Sergeant McLaughlin, who is going through the process. I think it's a wonderful addition to the department, really makes them professionalized, and I just want to recognize their hard work and let them know that we're proud of them.
Excellent.
Anybody got anything to add?
Chief is on the phone.
And Chief Miglianico, you're on the call?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Everybody has filed me through a lot of hard work over the last, say, two and a half years, and on June 4, we were voting unanimously by the committee, and met all the standards required, so very good. Afforded by everybody, and I'm very proud of the department as a whole.
Nice work, Nick.
Thank you very much.
All right. We do have another announcement, is that we're gonna be recognizing Richard Wallace, who was our electrical inspector, who is retiring. I believe you were 30-plus years as the electrical inspector here in Douglas?
Twenty-five.
How long did it take? I was with you for 20, I don't know.
At our age, time goes by.
A lot of years, many years.
Many, many years.
Yeah, too many.
So, and, you know, I hope you enjoy your retirement. We do have a certificate of appreciation for all of your years of work, for 30-plus years as the Douglas Electrical Inspector for our building department. And I see Adele's here.
Yes, may I speak?
Absolutely, Adele.
Okay, should I take this off so you can hear me?
You sure can.
Okay. I just wanted to come to make sure that Mr. Wallace, who I worked with for 20 of those years that he worked here, it was a pleasure, and he will be, I'll be honest, he will be completely missed in this town, unlike some other people.
Why were you looking at me when you said that, Adele?
I won't mention names, but no, it was a pleasure working with him, and he was all that you could ask for an electrical inspector, and we all worked together, all of us, where there's a lot of towns that people don't work together. So, just wanted to appreciate it, be here to see the appreciation.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anybody else wanna have any words that they'd like to share with our retiree?
I've worked together for the last 30-plus years, too, early 90s, in the town of Gilford, inspected together. Ran into the wife of 30 years on the job.
Am I the only one that hates that, like, early 90s was 30 years ago?
I know.
Well, well.
So I believe some people had dialed in for this. Does anybody care to add to congratulations or best wishes to our electrical inspector?
Gordon Reed from the Blackstone Valley Beagle just joined. Definitely would like to ask some congratulations, that I just emphasized, it's after the month of early 90s, but 30 years ago, that's when I started my current job, so I'm looking to retire, too.
All right, I think that's, everyone, congratulations, I hope you enjoy your retirement, and--
Enjoy.
Thank you.
We'll try and get through some of the electrical inspections without you. And I'm still upset that Adele was looking right at me with the whole, there's some people I won't miss, like-- What did I do?
I was just looking at her.
She didn't have a choice.
They can't see me on the screen.
I always thought that we got along fine, Adele.
We did, I'm just saying, it had to go in some direction, and they can't see me on the screen, so.
Like, Bone, if you wanted to get Bone in that look and say those things.
What, Tim?
What a chip this thing did, because it hardly shared with anybody, honestly, and treated everybody the same.
So--
And people respected you for that. I'm glad other people who treated everybody the same.
I tried to follow the code, and, you know, everybody was the same.
Absolutely, and that's the way it should be.
Sometimes you might have varied from the code a little bit.
There's always alternatives.
A lot of it, yeah.
Always alternatives, yes.
Well, let me, you want to present this? Yeah. I wish you the best luck with your background.
Thank you. I really didn't expect this.
And you weren't even gonna come in person. Who are you?
I don't know.
We had a gold watch, but Arden stole it.
It was community gold.
It's in the mail.
Yeah.
You know that postwork, you know, it's slow, it may get there someday. But thank you very much, sincerely appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
You can say whatever you'd like, Adele.
To Jackie for letting me know. Because I would've been really bummed if I would've missed this.
Absolutely. How's the state inspector job screening?
Good, right now it's kinda crazy, but yeah, I do like it, and it keeps me hopping. Keeps me hopping.
Something's got to, it's crazy around here lately.
It was nice seeing everybody.
Yeah, nice.
Nice seeing you, yes.
Have a good evening, enjoy the summer weather, stay safe.
You guys, too, thanks.
Thank you.
See you later.
Bye-bye.
All right, so that brings us to our first official item, which is approved temporary outdoor seating and liquor license for the Beagle Club and possible votes.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I am a member there.
Are you also a client?
I don't know. I don't know if you could call me a client, but I'm a member.
So, and Mr. Reed is on the call as well?
Maybe?
Perhaps not.
I'm having a really hard time hearing on the line, but if there's any specific questions, there's one person that's talking, I believe, at the meeting, it's easy to hear.
I would ask if you're not speaking to just make certain your microphone is muted, that might help?
Yeah, if you click on the, if you see, like, waves and stuff, just click on it, and that'll be enough.
Because it's really difficult to figure out what's going on.
Right, so whoever was just speaking, it's really easy to hear you, but everyone else I can't hear, if it's possible, get questions or anything through one person, it's actually done, I don't know. I know it's hard to hear, I know it's hard on my end.
There you go. Is that better? Move that mic over, Kevin.
Not really.
Move the mic closer.
No, not really.
How about now?
That's better.
All right.
You can hear me.
I hate that thing. No, I don't see any, I'm just going through the packet, he's got, everything's where it should be.
I don't have any issues.
As it's before us, I'd move approval?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm just waiting for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve's been made and seconded, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonin, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Can we adjourn this? This is ridiculous.
There.
Mr. Davis, you are muted at the current moment?
You're late.
Hal's muted.
You cannot mute. I can unmute.
There we go.
That's it.
How's that? Okay.
So motions?
We're in the roll call.
All right, so we have a motion that was made and seconded and approved by Hal, and Tim, so, waiting for your vote, Hal.
I vote yes.
Excellent. Mr. Hughes?
I vote aye.
All right, and Kevin Morris, aye, and that is approved. Sorry for the difficulties, we'll get through these tonight. Second item on the agenda is to consider and approve a local initiative program application for local action units and local initiative program, affordable housing deed rider for the Witten Reservoir Estates and possible votes. And it says on this is, "The local initiative program is a state housing initiative administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development to encourage communities to produce affordable housing for low and moderate income households. Provides technical and other non-financial assistance to cities or towns seeking to increase the supply of housing for households at or below 80% of the area median income. LIP-approved units are entered into the subsidized housing inventory, SHI, as pursuant to Chapter 40B." And we have a full packet that, I'm assuming he's going to explain the project itself.
You've got a bunch of people that can help you, you've got Bill, you've got Mr. Pace, I think you have one other person.
All right. Mr. Kandiff is on?
Yes.
Yes, he's there.
So, Bill, could you, would you mind walking us through a little bit on the project as to what you know on it?
Chuck, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. So this project originally came along and was permitted a number of years ago, probably around 2009, I'm guessing, and it's a small subdivision that was approved as what's called a flexible development here in town. The applicant, as part of a flexible development filing, must provide some portion of that housing as affordable. In this particular case, it's one unit within the subdivision, and really, they've started out construction out there, they need to get this going with the state so that the state approves it, and then they can continue building and getting building permits, because the building permits aren't tied to this designated affordable unit. The other thing is, it does count towards our affordable housing stock, which is good, and Town Council did review the application and the paperwork, and they gave their approval as to the form and compliance with the regulations and the decision.
Well, if Town Council feels good about it.
Yeah, Town Council was good with it.
Has there been anybody from the community at large that's had any issues or concerns regarding this that have come forward?
Not about the housing unit, we did have a little issue with some asphalt debris, but that was taken care of and resolved with the planning board, so, you know, we're moving forward, things are progressing nicely on the project.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Excellent. So the motion has been made and seconded, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonin, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morris, aye. All right, well, that was easy. Thank you very much, Bill. Vote on annual appointments of board and committees with expiring terms.
I'd like to pass over this unless there's urgency to do it today.
I have no objection.
No objection to passing over.
All right, we will pass over this and take it up on the next agenda. Four, vote on recommendations on town administrators' proposed FY '21 budget and possible votes. So this one may be a little bit more lengthy. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the recommendations and proposals and budget information that the town administrator sent to us all?
I have, yeah.
I've reviewed it, yes.
Okay.
I have as well.
So, and Matt, I apologize, refresh my memory on the recommendations, the recommendations that you had made are plugged into this, correct?
They're all plugged in. I have a, I know exactly where the list is in the other room, let me grab it.
Yeah, thank you. How was your Ubering, Tim?
The kid, dropping him off at the causeway so they go fishing, and he hooked my, hooked his lure into the back of my seat.
Oh, jeez.
In addition to--
Took a little while to get it unsnagged there.
In addition to the stress of shepherding three boys to this place and getting here on time, didn't get my backseat good, but--
I hope the fishing's at least fruitful.
Exactly.
We will find out.
Just so you know, we can't understand a word you said.
Me?
Any of you. Kevin?
How about now?
We could always hear you, Kevin, but everything else is just garbage.
I, I mean, I would suggest, having been on that side and finally giving up on the remote meeting piece on a matter as important as this, the communication really should be good, so I don't know if we're pinched for a vote today, but I wonder--
Yeah, Tim, I can't understand a word you said.
What in the hell is going on with this?
Kevin, can we try to restart, reboot the meeting, will that help, or?
We can try another reboot, I'm wondering if we're having bandwidth challenges or something. Oh, wait.
How about this end of the table, anybody hear me? No.
Apparently not.
Yeah, and Pat just sent me a message, he says it sounds like somebody's got a lot of, like, feedback coming into the audio.
That's kind of a trouble, somebody's done.
Try muting Hal, because he's the one who consistently-- How about now?
Is that better?
No, I can't hear Mike.
You just gotta start all over again.
Mike's muted. No, you got it.
No, you didn't, I think you were doing all right.
You just had Mike muted twice, and now Hal's muted.
It's the days of three Bonins up there.
All right, yeah, let's kick the meeting and start it again. Actually, let me--
Should you kick it, should everybody else dial in again?
No, it won't, the meeting will stay up, we won't have the host on.
I'm wondering--
Does it stay connected, or?
Yeah, stay connected, Hal, and just give me one minute, I'm gonna reboot this thing.
I got a day left on my free HBO subscription, let's get this thing going. I got, I got the whole season of Veep to watch, and--
You didn't watch Bosch, did you? On Prime? Oh, that was great.
Was it good?
Really good, yeah.
Long time ago, Tommy, that was good.
Yeah, and the Jack Ryan series was really good, so--
Yeah, I did see that, that was good.
Oh, just for our knowledge here, too, the mic remained on after our last meeting, for two or three minutes at least, my son could hear us talking in the room, just for everyone's verification.
Looks good.
You can see the room now?
Yeah.
How about these microphones, are they live now?
How's the audio?
Good.
Mike, Hughes?
Yeah.
Good audio or no?
Yeah, your phone's been okay.
Test Cortez?
Hello, test 123.
Yeah, that's good, Dave.
Thank you.
Test Bonin?
Bonin, 123.
Test Wojcicki? Hello?
I can hear you too, man, it actually helps to see you back, you know, when you're talking.
Right.
All right. Yee-haw! And Pat says better for sure. Okay, good, so--
Hal, I think you're a little deep there for Mike. You're muted, Mike, I'm curious for some reason, right?
He muted himself.
Oh.
It's a little bit tedious, but if you have to stay muted unless you're actually speaking, that--
Okay.
Mute the selectman.
No, let's teach him. So Hal, you see the red phone down at the bottom of the screen?
Yeah.
To the right of that, three icons, the mute audio button?
Right.
If you, if you click that when you're not speaking, and if you speak, just unmute yourself.
Yeah, I can do it, I can do it up and down.
Okay.
Is there push to talk?
Yes.
For what it's worth, I have a text from my home, it is coming through on the TV, and fine, they can hear everybody.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right.
See, it's, just be aggressive about it, just mute that microphone, that's where all the feedback's coming from.
Right.
Thank you. Beauty. We're good. All right.
So to review, I was trying to hit a target number and chose options which were the least disruptive to service delivery and yielded meaningful savings. Not that I'm overly enthusiastic about doing any of these things operationally, but our path has been to be very conservative about the budget, and I think events are pushing us, pushing towards suggesting that we made the right choices. A number of towns have gone to month-to-month budgeting, we are absolutely not alone, there's plenty, they're all volunteering the experiences they've had getting their month-to-month budget approved by DLS. By the way, July was approved today by DLS, so that filing we did at your last meeting has been approved. But others, Shrewsbury, Hopkinton, there's lots of names, you'd recognize the municipalities. Weston, where Leon was, who was the administrator in Sturbridge, went over to Weston, and he's going to month-to-month, and guess who else has gone month-to-month budgeting? I know you're shocked, but the Massachusetts General Assembly has decided--
I did see that.
--that they are going to do month-to-month budgeting, which should scare the bejesus out of any municipal government, because what they're saying is, they don't want to tell us what they want, what they're gonna do to revenues, and they're hoping that when we get to Phase 3F sub-double I of whatever recovery effort this is, that by then, revenues may have started to catch up.
Well, that and the CARES Act money, that potentially trickle our way.
It could, if, if it's approved in Washington. So until we have that level of certainty, it's better to be conservative and add back, or figure out a way to work with our collective bargaining units and our non-union employees in fiscal '22, if we had that opportunity, rather than face the distinct possibility that we would get six months into the fiscal year and have somebody come along and say, "Oh, yeah, you probably should've budgeted a 10% revenue cut, and you didn't, so now you gotta make up the 10% in six months instead of 12. We're gonna try to go the 12-month route and, and spread out the pain that way." I identified $645,240 worth of potential savings, and I recommended, I don't know if I put the sum on this, this sheet, close to $400,000 of those, and basically split the difference between the projected revenue shortfall, our ability to cover that with savings, and our ability to cover the rest with free cash. So, always trying to keep the demand on free cash right around $400,000. DLS also certified free cash this week, I'm not gonna remember the last three digits, it was $1.483 million. So $400,000 of that, we're thinking we'll plug into the fiscal '21 budget. So, the easiest recommendation was to budget $0 for OPEB, for funding for fiscal '21. It was easy because typically, we budget a certain amount, and then at special town meeting in the fall, when we have a read on where we are with our health insurance balance, typically if we are over, so we're gonna, we project a turnback coming from the health insurance line, we typically move that over to OPEB and get up to six digits. This year, I don't mind budgeting zero, because we engaged in the self-insured and strategic purchase of health insurance, in this case, our retiree plans are fully insured, but we went to the market with a national-level account, because we had enough lives in this group, and we cut the cost of our retiree plan by almost 33%. That being the case, our OPEB liability should reflect a substantial decrease, just actuarially, because we've, the baseline cost that was pumping up the exposure has been cut by a third. So, I don't think there's any loss there, we still have a plan, we would still do what we've always done at special town meeting in the fall, make an adjustment, but we don't need to budget the $50,000. The second one, it does have a minor operational impact and cannot be overly prolonged, however, if we expect a retirement in the police department and that position remains vacant for six months, we would save about half the base salary there, and it's a, it's a pretty decent chunk of money with, without actually, quote-unquote, hurting someone.
Right.
So, that, we're up to $98,000. The third recommendation is to reduce the total expense budget of municipal departments by 2.5%. I didn't write it in the cell, but it's all municipal departments with an expense budget greater than $2,500, I reduced by 2.5%. That saves $38,000. I expect that we'll cover this without any pain, because fuel expenditures should reflect low prices, and so this may be something that department heads don't really struggle to hit, because it's just, between heating fuel and travel fuel, they should be able to save quite a bit of money. Setting the COLA at zero for non-union employees for one year brings in just a little bit under $38,000. I've talked about this for a long time, so nobody should pretend to be surprised. We originally thought that in order to achieve savings targets, we would have to say no steps and no COLAs. COLAs where the money is. Steps, to me, and again, this is an option for the board, I think steps are further down, it's $39,000, it's actually a little bit, it's about 50/50, but this year it's $39,000, because you're including the adjustment you've made to me, which is a big chunk of that. But steps reflect the time that you have been working for the town and the value of the experience you have gathered from the additional years.
53G to work around that. So you could, a really big project, we know where those are going to occur. We know there's wetlands implications all around. And in that case, the applicant would be paying for the agent's time. Then that is truly direct and doesn't come into the budget. So I don't know that we would necessarily hurt a project or delay a project. It's just a little bit less clear. We have a budget ahead of time, in other words. And it's a discussion that you'd have to have with the applicant. I mean, the other thing we can do is hold off on it and see what the revenue projection is. It would reduce the amount of savings.
I have never been a fan of kicking the can down the road.
No. Our hope here is to get out in front of this or at least keep pace with it.
It's never served us well. Like, at least as long as I've been on the board, everything that we've tried to push off for another year is just, it's never gotten better.
Things look rosy, rosy here on the COVID front right now, but we can't predict the future. And we don't know what state or federal government's response is going to be to another perceived wave, so that we need to stay in front of that.
As much as it's impactful in areas, if it turns out, because we are very good at planning for the worst, you know, and being very conservative with how we move forward with things. And if it turns out the revenues shake out significantly better than what we'd anticipated, what it does is it extends our five-year timeline.
Right.
We've implemented savings that we probably should have been doing or looking at or leaning us out a little bit and modernizing Town Hall and its functionality. I think that it makes that override that we fought like hell to get passed, stretch a little bit further by implementing some savings today. And if it throws additional free cash towards the tail end of the year that we can use on a capital project like the radios, all the better for us. I think it's just managing funds as responsibly as we can.
Hal, you were muted on this side. Did you have something you wanted to say? If so, could you unmute your phone?
No, I'm all set with going along with the consensus, I think. Any projects that we have, there may be some assistance development can do as well, so it's probably not a major issue.
If I can do one thing.
Sure.
I missed part of what you had said, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I couldn't understand her very well.
Yeah, we kind of, would you mind repeating that? And my apologies, it just, it was kind of garbled audio when it came in.
I'll walk in.
Okay.
Oh, that's easier.
This is a bit of a sitcom, this one.
I'm not a fan.
No.
Here she is. Live and in person.
I totally, I didn't understand the term of the term, but 53G is how I always have to resolve it. It's not for employees, so I don't know how, we'd have to look at how that's going to be implemented. So that's when we have the developments and we have to use an outside consultant, some of the, you know, the town and genetic field is necessary for a certain project, it's not for staff.
Could I ask, I know it sounds like kind of a tricky bookkeeping question. The conservation agent, could we make him a 1099 and therefore he's now a consultant?
He has to be in the business of performing the service. That's an IRS thing. They just don't like you to make some.
So the alternate path there is that you don't fund the salary at all? And Concom hires him as a consultant?
As long as he's in the business of performing the service.
Okay.
If you're controlling where he works, how he works, when he works, he's an employee of the town.
Independent contractor versus employee, correct.
And he, you know, that's, I mean, we do have, like, the water health uses an outside consultant for the well inspections, and we have someone that, he is in the business of performing the service, we can use him as a 53G, we do. But you can't mix, an employee cannot be a 1099 person and an employee. IRS just doesn't like that. So you could not use a combination of 53G and have them on payroll.
No, it makes sense.
It doesn't matter of ethics, it can't be both either.
Right. So the only way to do that is if he's in the business of performing that service, then we'd have to completely defund the position and he'd be funded solely under 53G, right?
You could.
Well, let me ask you a question, though. So, not just 53G, though. Could Concom hire the agent as a consultant with the restricted receipts account? The wetlands conservation?
Well, the receipt, that's a receipt reserve, so that's, you said that right, that's, that gets transferred to the general fund and funds the salary out of that.
But they could use that to lock in the consultant. To be blunt, we eliminate the position, the person becomes a consultant, Concom continues to want to work with that agent, hires him as a consultant, pays him a regular consulting fee like we would pay the IT guy, a monthly fee, and then all, everything above and beyond that, he'd be eligible to be 53G.
So, but, you know, there's, this would be strictly up to the person, because there's a negative to be a 1099.
Sure.
Because you are responsible both the employer and the employee taxes. I mean, it's a hit. So that's, you're talking a lot of hypotheticals that I don't even know.
He'd sign off on, right?
If he would be willing to do that. You know, the easiest path is to do a transfer from the wetlands account into the general fund and keep it funded. To keep things where they are now as far as staffing. But you just, I just wanted to caution you on, you know.
Right, no, thank you for that.
Don't exit. While I have you.
You're more than six feet away, you're safe. Pull up a chair.
Tim just found some money.
The, the lack of an OPEB contribution, at least in the time being, I know when we set that up, it was, didn't matter what the amount was, as long as we were contributing something to it, for purposes of keeping your credit rating up.
My understanding is it's not, it's not in the month-to-month, but I don't think it's been a zero for the entire year. I think when we talked about it, we've been looking at the fall town meeting, special, fall special town meeting, to see what closed out as part of the health insurance. We have used some of the health insurance funds for the interdepartmental transfers because we didn't hold a special in the spring, but I think we would still look to put something, my recommendation, put something in there, because you're right, we need to continue to show effort into putting money into OPEB. The savings on the yetna will help the actuarial study, but I think the numbers that are going into the retirement, you know, you can see the count going up as well. So some of that are the offset by just increasing the number of times that we're going to. You know, so our savings for the premiums have gone down, but the number of lives that have, you know, added on to the health insurance retire each year has gone up. So we may make it up in numbers and not rates. But again, we'd be looking at the fall town meeting, special, fall special town meeting to actually add to the.
To that.
We will have some turnbacks at health insurance, so I think what we have to do
Okay.
Other than it's nice to actually see you in here.
It is.
So what is, what would your view be if, we never really discussed this before, if the health insurance group says, we need to take an equity distribution simply because we're over the 8% cap we set for ourselves for the fund? That would be another source of funds that could go to OPEB.
Yeah.
It would be an appropriate use of those funds to cover future health insurance.
Yeah. So that would come back into the general fund, we'd have to wait for it to be certified in the free cash, so then we can transfer it again. I, and you guys know me well enough, I like to follow the story behind the numbers to put it in the proper place. So that's always my recommendation. If we have retired health insurance closed back to the general fund, it's appropriate that it gets transferred to OPEB at the following town meeting. You know, that's an appropriate use for it. Same with that, you know, that's an appropriate use. It came from health insurance to shoot the rat in health insurance.
Makes it easy to follow.
Well, it's the intent. What is the intent behind the original appropriation? You know, unless you're redirecting it to, like, a capital to a capital, you know, kind of do like items. To me, it makes sense. It, you know, provides some continuity to the organization, you know, we meet our goals, just makes sense that way.
It works.
I will never question your bookkeeping, Gene. If you have a system that works and it's been working for a while, I'm good with it.
Again, it's just, you follow the intent of the vote, that's how I operate, you know, and to do what's best going forward for the town.
Do you have a balance on the wetlands fund?
I do, they're not moving here.
Can you send it over via paper airplane?
You could always log back into the Avaya meeting and try to tell us.
By the time she can get back in, we'll be done.
There was a lot of feedback tonight, it was hard to.
That was unnecessary, Dave.
The truth sometimes, Dave, it's Mr. Chairman.
I know. It does. It's painful.
Are we limited in the amount, my friends in Concom will hate me for this question, but are we limited in the amount that we can pull from that?
You know, you look at what basically you're taking for revenues for the year, you know, because the fast view pull-up, it's like a savings account.
Yeah.
You know, so if you pull it fast, you're not going to have enough for a long period of time. I don't recall what they've taken in this year for receipts. Typically, we try to kind of look at the receipts for the year and use that as a, as a basis to, use that as a transfer. There is a limit as to the percentage you can fund a lot of the wetlands.
Yeah.
So we couldn't fund a hundred percent. And it has to be useful wetlands. So if the, you know, if you're looking at the admin system, if a portion for a job is used for that, then that's appropriate. But if the rest of the job is used for something else, then that's not appropriate.
They can't use it to fund a beer garden at soldiers?
No.
All right.
We can never use anything to fund.
They can use Kevin's checking account. What, what impact on the town if we were to move in any direction on the building department there? From a day-to-day operation, you said that we like to see, people like to go in and see people. Will it be similar to what we experienced when we cut the Department of Health staffing down considerably?
Well, I'm in the process of trying to figure out how all the time gets used. To date, this fiscal year, we've issued 813 building permits. So it's a busy office. How much of that can we take away? So, the purpose of e-permitting is I, the customer, I, my application auto-fills with information if it recognizes me. I pay online, and then I can scroll to, the inspector will have reserved slots of time when he's available to do inspections. I'm going to finish my rough frame and my electrical and plumbing inspections will have been done by next Friday, so I'm going to ask Mark to show up the following Tuesday when he's at work to inspect my rough frame. And it's scheduled, the schedule is populated. Then the e-permitting software also generates the itinerary so that the inspector has the most efficient travel route to hit all the sites. That's what the program does. That's how it takes time out of the building official and the building clerk's day and makes it available for other things. We, I was surprised to hear how much time we're spending chasing after issues of, frankly, neighbor disputes and people complaining about each other because they don't get along and they're going to, you know, they're going to have the school bus monitor come and fix it for them. And, you know, frankly, it's a distraction and we, we have a 100% return call and empathy for the caller, and that's a high level of service, but, you know, at some point, we have to stop being dragged into the half fields and poits. If you don't know where your property line is or you can't agree on where it is, then that's not for the building commissioner for the town of Douglas to resolve, that's something.
That's the civil engineer.
You know, the two of you is going to hire a survey and put the marks in the ground and agree that those are the marks and then leave it, deal with it privately. But, so, you know, I don't know that it's a good solution to load up that clerk's position with more. So that's why I'm open-minded about the, the other clerk position in the community development office. There may be options for part-time or three-quarter time or some other way to do it.
The e-permitting, my understanding, is really designed to cut the amount of foot traffic that you have coming into your building official's office.
Yeah, for simple things.
And a lot of the jumbling of paperwork.
Going back to roofing permits. I went in there the other day, again, in connection with conversation about the restaurant on Main Street, and saw that there was a stack of green cards there. Those were all roofing permits. And those should be really simple. There's not a lot that goes into the permit or the inspection or the work. And right now, we have, you know, a lot of hands touch it.
I think you can expand that to all kinds of different permits and licensing issues.
Yeah, they recommend that you, you know, bite off what you can chew. So it's designed, all of the software packages are designed to start with building and permitting process, but they can be extended to licensing. So everything from drug licenses, parts of the alcohol license application that we can automate, all of that stuff that people right now have to coordinate and touch, it's, the wizard works like TurboTax. It won't let you go to the next step if you haven't filled in the necessary boxes. And I'm not exactly sure about this, but I think in certain circumstances, it's very much like TurboTax where, why won't you let me go forward? I'll click the help symbol and it'll explain to me why I can't go. That's, that will take away some of the phone time.
I've fallen comfortable with the recommendations presented by the town administrator.
Yeah, I don't think I want to tinker with them too much at this point and have the danger of falling behind if things get worse. You made a good point earlier where we unfortunately have a lot of experience planning for things like this and budgeting conservatively, and I don't think now is the time to take any of this lightly.
It'd be nice to actually be ahead of something for a change.
Well, I don't even, if it's as bad as it's going to be, you're never really ahead of it. School in the fall, we've got some early recommendations from the governor that seem near impossible to meet even to the most wealthy of communities. A cut to that school, I mean, I don't really know where we are with, you know, kids in classrooms of only 10 separated, I mean, we can't afford kids at 24 in a classroom.
Well, you can see.
It's not realistic.
Right, so what do you do?
The big thing is, like, the, from what I've seen, everything that came from DESE regarding the recommendations for reopening schools, it's impossible. So most of the other districts, you know, that I'm aware of have already pretty much accepted, there's not going to be real school starting in September. And they're focusing their attention to their e-learning. And they're boning up on Google Classroom, which we do participate in but don't utilize. I would probably say regarding the school budget, e-learning is less expensive than sitting in a classroom. I would strongly advise the, the schools and the school committees to put a strong focus on their infrastructure, software, licensing, and the things that they need to really prepare to launch at the first day of school next year of kids are at home and there's a teacher in front of a video camera and they have a Google Classroom up, that's a fully electronic but interactive experience for them to start learning until the governor tells us otherwise. At least that's my opinion. But.
Is that final or is that, was that just an early?
I believe those might have been the opening gambit.
That's the opening gambit that came from DESE. And not pulling any punches, like, when the COVID thing started and we started having to look into remote workers on the town side and then started talking to the school regarding remote classroom learning, they really need to revisit their IT department because they're just not savvy on understanding how to set up remote workers. Like, they, I genuinely felt bad, she appeared to be, like, way over her head. And I mean, that's, that's on their side and that staffing changes or, or classes or certifications that they need to do, but I don't think technologically speaking that they are prepared to be able to address this.
It's an interesting problem, because you can't do both. You're either going to invest in your technology platform and make remote learning work, and it may have some value, even if we actually got back to normal, you would still, that student with the prolonged illness who, other than not being in the classroom, could still participate, there might be other ways to keep people from falling behind, et cetera, et cetera. Operationally, it is impossible, I think, to do what DESI wants everybody to do. The amount of money, just, even if everything was reimbursed, even if every dollar is reimbursed, you still have to be liquid enough to buy the stuff you need to certify that you're ready to open. And we're not that flexible. We don't have that kind of money.
The daily cleaning alone.
So I'm, I'm afraid that it's just silliness, and I think there are some districts that have already called, called it out for what it is. And I don't, I hope Douglas doesn't get dragged into this position where, well, we're not really sure what to do, so we'll just mumble our way through it and see if it'll go away in another year. Because Zoom has proven to be a sketchy product. If we're on the free side, there's, you know, the security is poor. I know that most students participated, that's my understanding. I'll tell you, to be perfectly honest, I have no, no way of understanding how BVT is going to operate.
With our money.
How in the world can you do hands-on?
Couldn't resist, sorry.
Hands-on vocational technical education in the trades every other week if you can't go to school?
I think it.
It doesn't make any sense at all, and I think at some point, everybody's going to have to just try to figure out how much risk they're willing to accept in order to get the education piece done.
The only way I could see BVT doing it would be their classroom or academics would be remote, and then you'd end up doing your shops, either outdoors or having huge shop areas to try and do your, your practicals. Or have, like, you know, I get six people in electrical that are here and they're in full PPE and it's going to be miserable. So, but I mean, my bigger thing is, is BVT is a slight concern, I'm more, I'm genuinely worried about, about our district, because the, like, there is kind of a track record of, we're just going to kind of mumble along and one in doubt, do nothing. And, I'm sorry, you know, the one in doubt, do nothing, that'll get you killed. Like, every time. The inability to make a decision is, in my mind, it's almost a fatal flaw. So even if it's the wrong decision, make one. Like, just pick a path and go with it and we'll try and support them. At least that's where I see it. We do have the school committee coming in next week where we can really grill down into what some of their intentions are, that wasn't the intent of my meeting with them.
You'd have to post it.
But I can post on there as part of what we're doing.
I think it's worth remembering that regardless of what happens with the health situation, the virus itself, all the numbers appear to be trending positively. There's some concern of a second wave and everybody makes their own decision based on whatever information they receive and believe. But as far as the tax numbers, regardless of how easy we get out of the current situation or how quickly it rectifies itself, is a better way of saying it, there is still going to be a significant tax problem at the state level, which of course flows right downhill to us. Regardless of what happens, we're already there as far as at least fiscal '21 and probably fiscal '22, I think you'd agree. So that no matter how rosy the numbers may appear right now, it doesn't change the economics. And I think it's probably safe to say, we need to be concerned not only about the virus, that's everybody's health, but we need to be concerned, especially referencing DESE's regulations for the fall, about government's reaction and the burden that it places on us. When I talk about government, I'm not talking about those of us sitting here with shorts and T-shirts on. I'm talking about state and federal governments that make decisions that really bind us and really put us in a corner. And I think the DE, the proposed DESE regulations are an excellent example of that. You can throw around terms like unfunded mandate and all the rest of that, but the fact of the matter is, the regulations as we see them now make it absolutely impossible for us to have normal regular in-school sessions in the fall. I mean, tend to a classroom and the cleaning burden that Selectman Bonin mentioned, it simply is not feasible. I don't think it's feasible for any town, sure as heck isn't feasible for Douglas.
We don't have the staff or the space to do it that way.
We don't have the money, it boils down to, we don't have the staff, we don't have the space, even though I think our inventory of classrooms, if you want to refer to it, is as good as any towns around here in the Blackstone Valley. But we just don't have the ability to do that. Out of 351 communities in the state, I doubt that very many of them do. It just is not feasible to do, and it makes you wonder really, the thinking behind regulations, the thinking that produces those regulations, that thinking seems to be echoed in a lot of other areas, it is just not realistic.
No.
I think you used the term silly, Matt, and that's probably the best term.
Well, it's a, it's a pipe dream. I mean, if you look at it and the way teachers have been always saying, classroom size and student-to-teacher ratio has always been a problem, it would be a dream for them to have a 10 to 1.
Exactly. Dream for all of us, exactly.
You know, and the level of education obviously would be significantly better because you have better student-to-teacher ratios. It's just a matter of, financially, that model doesn't work. If it did, every town would be having smaller classrooms. At least that's where I'm at.
So, the state, and I don't know the exact numbers, but has a rainy day fund and I think it's a couple billion, right? Might be that they would be tapping.
State shortfall?
Yeah.
Six billion was the last figure.
The shortfall, but their rainy day fund?
Well, rainy day fund, I'm not familiar, I don't know.
So, three bill?
Three?
Three bill? So, you got to figure that this, lawmakers in an election year are going to be very cognizant of what it is that towns will need. So, I'm hopeful between the CARES Act that might come out of Washington that helps the states and in turn helps the municipalities, and tapping into the rainy day fund, that we will still have a problem, but it might not be the, the problem that we discussed tonight. I don't want to pigeonhole the schools too, too much, because it's so damn difficult to keep the momentum that we've got over the past couple of years with the override passing and the town, and the town's kids, you know, really seeing Douglas as the best option for them. I'm concerned if we're cutting in advance of or anticipating of a massive shortfall, that may hurt us in the long run.
You know, I can say, I don't know. Here's what I will say, and it's probably not even politically correct or anything. Prior to the COVID pandemic coming out, I would agree with you. Great strides were being made over there, and it seemed to be that we were moving in the right direction as far as students staying there. And I think that's only a small part of how you need to look at the district, you have to look at them as a partner to the community as well. And sitting here in the EOC, when the pandemic hit, and the town looking to try and not just feed students but feed residents and work with the schools and have them as a good partner, they're a lousy partner. They really are. They couldn't get out of their own way. And you sat, like, we all sat here in a meeting and listened to the person that was a visionary for the district that we all kind of looked up to saying, like, you know, this guy's got some great ideas, and literally fall on the, well, what if they audit us over a sun butter sandwich?
No, but what does that have to do with a seventh-grade kid that's just desperately wants a good, good education?
It has to do with a matter of, like, they'll still get a good education. It's. It has to do with the matter of, like, they'll still get a good education. We could turn around tomorrow and fund the school with an additional $2 billion, right? Same level of education. The first thing that these guys need to do is how to actually run the money that they have, and they have yet to have ever shown us that they can do that effectively. From school transportation contracts to heating oil contracts to remote learning programs. So they haven't figured out how to actually deliver something without getting in their own way or running significantly over budget trying to do it. Like, I'll say this, in all honesty, the luxury that I have, and I shouldn't call it a luxury, my ex-wife lives in Milford, my daughter goes to a Milford school, Milford's facing the same, you know, e-learning challenges that Douglas did. My daughter was online at 8:00 in the morning and remained online until 2:00 in the afternoon in a Google Classroom and received the exact same level of education that she was getting while she was sitting in a Milford classroom. My son logged on to a Zoom meeting. They were talking about Tom Brady. They really couldn't figure out who was participating and who wasn't. They couldn't communicate to the parents effectively. Do these grades count or don't they? And it was basically half of a wasted year to kids. It was piss poor. And now they got a summer to sit back and think about it and say, we need to do something to address this, and I can guarantee you, none of them are. None of them. And I'm concerned about reducing from 2% to 1% to them? Not at all.
I ran back to my office, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me. Bearing in mind that we're looking to use just about $400,000 of free cash this year, so that's our rainy day fund. If we do all the recommendations that are on these sheets that we just discussed, the shortfall for next year would be $536,000. So anything we don't do this year, add it to the 400, and then add a slightly higher amount to the 500 next year. So that means you would basically have two and a half years' worth of free cash at that pace. Because by fiscal '23, the deficit would grow to $702,000.
Right.
And that's just the inexorable rise of the cost of things that we buy. If it's only 1% a year, and, you know, I was trying to fix this problem, so I have no problem calling it out. The compensation table for classroom educators goes up every year an automatic 3-point-something percent, and that's 80% of their budget. That's two times faster than the revenue base of the town of Douglas grows. So it's an inevitable crash, and we were trying to fix that. We were trying to make that curve come down and be nice, not flat, but at a level that we could manage with the annual increases in the revenue base of the town, along with some economic development to support it. We don't have that luxury right now. If we did what we said we were going to do then, we would spend all the free cash in one year, rolling the dice that state revenues wouldn't drop and that our own revenues, remember, we do have some revenue exposure that's not related to the state. There's the town's share of meals tax, beverage tax. Then there's also our ability to collect taxes from people who are not employed, who are unable to pay. Eventually, we collect those taxes because death and taxes are inevitable.
Be it asset forfeiture or something.
Yeah, and it's a horrible way to go about business, but that is the reality, is that you can't escape your tax liabilities. But any lag in those collections really is pretty significant. We found out this week that the state would not make a distribution of meals tax for a whole quarter. So they're going to sit on it instead of July, because they're pushing back the deadline. And I appreciate this because it supports small business, right? You don't have to pay your tax liability. Because the dirty little secret is that a lot of restaurants are slow paying their sales tax because they're making the money to pay taxes that were due at a previous period. It's just the way they work. It's a tight business, a tough financial business, so it's good for them, but it's bad for us. Now, it happens that this year, we were running a little hot in that account. We always, Gene is very conservative about revenue projections, I'm very grateful for that, so we were already at our projected level. So the fact that we're not going to get a check from the state doesn't hurt us.
Doesn't hurt us.
And it's going to roll into fiscal '21 anyway, so it's fine. But you see what I'm saying, is that everything's slipping just a little bit. So even this, like, 530, 6850, that's a year from now. None of us has any idea where we're going to be a year from now. But we started this exercise, we said we were looking at a two-year budget. What could we sustain reasonably for two years if we spend almost $1 million in free cash in those two years? Now you're getting real close to, can't we balance the budget '23?
Does it? Yeah, looks like it. Everybody?
They all left us.
I'm not even going to comment.
Okay. Just making you aware.
Cisco. That's all I'm going to say.
The point taken on that, I just, it's incredibly disheartening on all fronts.
We have to see where the future's going to take us here.
Well, I think what we're down to is, do we, I mean, is there an alternative to the recommendations from the town administrator? Do people not feel comfortable enough making a decision regarding altering the budget based off of those recommendations? Do you want an additional week or so to continue to play with the format and see if you can find something that will do equal savings? I mean, I'm-
I'd certainly defer to the town administrator's knowledge, his superiority of mind. I'm not going to credit second guesses for it.
My only concern is, as longer that we wait to make a decision on this, the harder it's going to be to recover from something. So I mean, at some point, between now and town meeting, it needs to happen. I would rather do it sooner rather than later, but if people aren't comfortable at this particular meeting, I'll put it as a rolling item every week. We ready now? No? Okay, we'll wait another week.
Fincom has to do a budget.
So what we vote on and approve will go before a finance committee in order to keep the processes of government-
Make a break.
All right.
Hal, Mike, you guys got anything?
No. Fairly good discussion. I don't have too much to add. I think that Matt's done a great job in coming up with the monthly budget. I'm going to support my recommendations. Please, Matt.
Well, anyone care to make a motion, or they want to? What do we want to do here, fellas?
It's time. I move that we accept the budget recommendations as proposed by the town administrator.
Motion to accept them has been made by Dave. Anyone second?
Second.
That has been seconded by Mike Hughes. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Can I offer one thought about your motion?
Yeah, I probably not worded correctly.
No, it's fine. With respect to item seven, which is community development, I think I'd be most comfortable if you directed me to hit the savings target, give me some flexibility around, but to hit that number, but not necessarily the way I outlined here.
So reorganize it as you see fit to hit that number.
All right.
I would so amend my motion to allow the town administrator the flexibility to hit the number in any way he deems best for the town.
On item seven?
On item seven. On item seven.
And it's been reseconded by Mr. Hughes, correct?
Correct.
Can I, any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Bonin, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye. Dave, aye.
Morse, aye. Excellent. Number five is approve and recommend proposed zoning bylaw use table amendment for industrial activities outside a building to the planning board for the annual town meeting and possible votes. And-
No. That just isn't right.
What isn't right?
It comes to you, and you, more or less immediately, hot potato it over planning board, and they have to have a hearing. I think you can opine as a board if you desire to. This is a fairly straightforward explanation. Bob is here, he came out to the meeting, so I'll let him explain what he's trying to do because he's been the bird dog on this and has made all the progress. But just to get the agenda item right, you'd be voting to send it to planning boards, so they, they're the ones who will recommend this one way or the other at town meeting.
Gotcha. Mr. Minaric, it seems like ages since I've seen you last.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, fell asleep up here.
I fell asleep up here?
No, I didn't. This will be easier than the last discussion.
Matt is correct in that you will forward this to the planning board. Planning board will hold to, publish it for two weeks' notice, have a public hearing on it, then send it back to you, and you place it on the warrant for the annual town meeting or the special town meeting in the fall. The EDC held a special meeting last night, and we voted unanimously 5-0 in favor of proposing this, the following amendment to the town of Douglas zoning bylaws. We're simply adding a new industrial use to Appendix A in the Schedule of Use regulations. If you get the packet that I sent you, if you look at the existing Appendix A, industrial use, number one, any manufacturing use, including processing, fabrication, assembly, conducted inside a building, that really handcuffs the EDC on a lot of items. The ZBA, the zoning bylaws, are cumbersome to work with. This will give us some flexibility. We're making another use, an additional use, the same wording, but conducted outside a building. So that'll cover the gamut of any industrial use. You could pick, even our solar people in town, if they had to fabricate panels outside of a building, it's not allowed. This new change would at least allow them to perform a function outside the building.
So it's giving us more flexibility in industrial areas?
It does, in the industrial areas, and if you notice, all the ends are across the board in all the districts except industrial. And so we retain control over what we permit. There'll be a special permit by the zoning board of appeals with reference to two other sections, Section 533, which would be landscaping requirements for property lines, and then the entire section of 5.4 environmental performance standards, both of which are in your packet at the last two pages. So it opens up possibilities, but we retain control on what we permit.
Sounds good to me.
It really helps the EDC in what we've been dealing with.
We want your job easy, Bob.
That's not going to happen.
Question, if the special permit could be done by the planning board, Matt, is that possible, or is it ZBA's jurisdiction for that?
We discussed that last week with town council in a conference call, and that was tossed back and forth. It could be one-stop shopping with the planning board. But then the zoning board, they issue most of the permits anyways. And that whole section in industrial is listed with the BA, special permit by the zoning board. So we decided just to keep it simple, not mixed. But that can be brought up in the planning board hearing on, after the two-week notice. They could discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, answer Hal's question.
Absolutely.
I have actually a really strong opinion about this. This belongs in the zoning board because it goes to questions of use. So when a special permit comes out of the planning board under the zoning code, it's usually driven by site plan. So should there be a drive-through window or not? Well, that's the kind of issue I want the planners to focus on and sharpen their pencils because they've got the plans out, and they're looking in detail, you know, what species of tree and all this other stuff that they're going to go through. Zoning has always been about, primarily about uses and dimensions. And giving the zoning board the discretion to determine whether or not a special permit would issue for an outdoor manufacturing use lets them consider, well, what's the size of the lot? How are the setbacks going to be honored? And then the environmental standards are part of the zoning code, and the zoning official is the one who is going to be enforcing a lot of that upfront. So I'd like to keep those things separate, Hal. You know, this clarifies, as you know, Hal, because I think you were on the email string, I threw a screamy hissy fit because I didn't agree with town council's interpretation of this comma. Because if you go through the entire industrial table and you say the only things that are allowed are the things after the last comma, we'd have nothing in Douglas except mini storage units, manufacturing inside a building, which, you know, last I checked, the manufacturing sector is, you know, it's tough to get manufacturing. And what else is followed by a comma? It's only the industrial use table where we have this really weird sentence construction. And council decided to take this very conservative.
Hinderred by punctuation.
And, oh, no, because I think it's a logical construction that was driven by enforcement considerations in other zones. In other words, you don't want people fabricating stuff in the residential zone, it's not allowed. And you don't want that person to have the excuse of saying, well, sure, I'm building boats, but it's inside my garage, so nobody can hear it. What's it to you if it's a residential zone? And the zoning official would say, no, really, it's still manufacturing, including if it's inside a building, so knock it off. I think that's where that came from. I don't think the intent of this, in a town full of gravel pits and sand pits and mulch operations, that this was done intentionally to prevent any manufacturing or processing outside, because then almost every business in town is illegal. Right? If it wasn't grandfathered, it shouldn't be happening, but it does all the time. There are screens everywhere, guys are screening loom, there's all kinds of operations going on, and it's fine. The environmental standards protect the neighbors from dust and fumes and sound and-
Lights.
Lights. This amendment, as suggested, would clarify that though and say outdoor manufacturing uses are allowed if the zoning board finds it acceptable. That would allow us to do, I'm not going to pull any punches here, there are real projects that want to come in. How many times in the world of economic development, and I'll ask Selectman Davis the question, how many times do you get a win-win where somebody says, I'd love to take over that gravel pit, so it doesn't need to be remediated, we don't have to backfill the thing and lowman seed and go through all the pain of getting that person who owns that property to do it, and get a building or some other project out of that site because it's licensed level? I don't know. To me, that's a win-win, Hal. I don't know how many of those you've seen. You have more experience than I am.
I'm all for it.
I have to agree with the town administrator on that thought process. I know we discussed that, and I've been in lengthy conversations with town council, and town council says you can go either way, but I do agree that the zoning board, because it's a use, should come out of the zoning board.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Anybody want to make a motion? I think Hal's trying to make a motion, but he's muted.
Okay, I move that we send this over to the planning board for their review.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
We start with you.
I was going to amend that motion.
Oh, go ahead. Amend it.
Bonin, aye.
You can amend it.
I'll say it after.
All right.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
So when we relay it, if you would, just say it was a unanimous support of the board of selectmen to the fine volunteers.
10-0 now.
10-0.
Really out on a limb on that one.
You don't see that happen ever in Douglas, but...
Nobody better stand in the way of this one.
Thanks for all your work.
Great work.
I thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
I hope the chair was comfortable for your power nap back there.
Oh, it was. It was.
All right, good.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Have a good evening with you.
All right. All right, so now we need to approve the minutes from the June 16th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Did you say something, Mike?
I think he said second.
Oh, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
Bone and I.
Right on the ball. Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
Morris, aye.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
I'll be as quick as I can. I just want to clarify a comment I made earlier about the number of building permits. It is 813. That's every permit that comes out of that department. So remember, that's 320 buildings, but it's 203 electrical, 137 gas, 87 planning, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Right? So it's not 813 new single-family homes. 813 permits for the work that a permit is required for. This will be the last week of the meals program for now. We think we've learned enough to be able to fire it back up if and when needed. So the effort is moving over towards the community garden, which is flourishing, by the way. And I'm learning a lesson in humility. Every time I spend a whole hour weeding and I only get this much done, and I can see this expectation. I know there's a crew that's getting together tomorrow, volunteers, the sizable group, to take a whack at it, but everything's blooming and everything's very healthy. And that's our emphasis over the summer months is to try to keep the food pantry, you know, stocked and full of fresh food for people who may need it. And, you know, set pride aside to get kids at home, you know, get the help that you need because community is trying to help everyone in the best way possible, the best way for the taxpayers as well. I mentioned all the approvals that came through. So free cash was certified, retained earnings was certified, the month-to-month budget for July was approved. So we got that much of the update. On your agenda for next meeting, I know there's discussion about requesting the presence of the school committee and certain personnel to review some operational details. This arises from the food program. And I just want to remind everyone that people take their responsibilities very seriously. I think that is very true of both the finance director and me, and in her role as the town accountant specifically. I will not speak for her. I will tell you that I don't, I know that she does every line of every warrant down to the penny, and that's how she gets comfort with signing. I look at it for that too, but I trust her, so I don't do that work. And I look, I review warrants generally for whether or not I think the procurement was done correctly. Did we, are we spending the right amount of money on that or have I seen somebody else paid less somewhere else and why would that be? Where did we come up with this vendor relationship? Our other responsibility is, is if we see things that aren't right, we're not supposed to sign the warrant. We're supposed to kick it back and say, you need to come back with more backup. So last meeting, we had a discussion about the bus contract. Eventually, the backup was provided. The news is good, so I'm still as annoyed as I was then that I had to ask so much to get what so obviously was needed. The good news is that it is a good memorandum of understanding. I can tell you from reviewing the backup, the work was done by our vendor. And so I want to give credit where credit is due. Tellstone has proven to me that they are a reliable, trustworthy, honest, hard-working small business. They came forward and said, this is what we need to keep operating. And that was, that's how they got to 68%. The other bus companies with school districts not that far away, including BVT itself, didn't press the issue and Vendetti whacked them for 82% of the bill. That's a big, big deal. And so I'm very, very happy with Tellstone. I think they're fabulous. And that's why, you know, we felt pretty strongly about trying to help them stay in business, getting them involved in the food delivery program because they are a true partner to the community and it's a pleasure to work with them. I think, like I said, level shooters all the way. We have had tremendous difficulty reconciling the inventory of the food supplies at the schools with what we have used in our delivery program. So today, we were presented with invoicing and a suggestion that maybe we were on the hook for another $8,000 bucks. But after going through every last item, item by item, and having to do the research themselves, this was one of the most expensive days I have ever seen. I had a town engineer at $100 grand a year and a senior center director at 70-something grand a year spend the whole day trying to get the food service manager's spreadsheets to make any sense at all. How does that come back to me? Why am I signing this warrant for spending on food items if the inventory isn't tight enough to understand what's being used, where it's going, and why? Okay? There are three things I want to relate to people and they had better pay attention. In the Town Administrator Act, section 1-2 subsection M, under my responsibilities to inquire and make investigation at any time into the conduct and operation of offices or performances of duties of any officer or employee, department, board, commissioner, or other town agency, that's pretty sweeping stuff. So when I ask a question, I want an answer. And if there's any doubt in anybody's mind, there's always subsection O. It's long, but I'll read it. "To coordinate the activities of all town agencies serving under the office of the town administrator and the office of the board of selectmen with those under the control of other officers and multiple member bodies elected directly by the voters. For this purpose, the town administrator shall have authority to require the person so elected or their representatives to meet with the town administrator at reasonable times for the purpose of effecting coordination and cooperation among all agencies of the town. The town administrator shall have the right to attend and speak at any public meeting of any multiple member body." So I think next meeting of the board of selectmen is a convenient time to have a meeting with the school committee to talk about what's going on in food service. But here's the best part, this is the board of selectmen's authority. Chapter 41, section 23B of the Massachusetts General Laws. "The selectmen of any town may make an investigation into the conduct and operation of any town department. Upon completion of such investigation, a report shall be submitted to the town clerk and such report shall be printed in the annual town report." So one way to get your name up in lights is to be uncooperative in an investigation into the fiscal integrity of the reporting process around inventory of food items, which frankly can be very expensive. So we will get to the bottom of this. Not only do we sign warrants, we are signing reimbursement requests from higher levels of government. And we certify, me, me and Gene certify that we have reviewed those reimbursement requests and we believe the integrity of those requests. It's because we can back up everything we're asking the taxpayer at the state level or federal level to reimburse us for is properly documented and right. And having to tear our hair out to get simple answers to a system that should already exist. So some people's worst nightmare, my dad was a food service manager, so I know the job. I used to go to his place of work every day after track and after baseball to wait for him to leave work so, to take me home. So I watched the guy work. Your inventory is your Bible. It's what you have. How much stuff do I have? How much do I need to order? What am I going to cook tomorrow? What's the oldest so I can push it out the door before it expires, before I order new stuff? It's the most simple fundamental responsibilities of the job. I'm not convinced it's happening. I've got photos, inventory sheets this thick, as well as the fact that Patrice did a fabulous job of documenting every single resource that she used. So she knows what she used. So to bill us for more than what she says she used is questionable practice. That's what the conversation will be about. If it doesn't happen here, it'll happen in my office because I'm not going to let it go. It's taxpayer money, it's sacrosanct, and it was a program that we initiated to relieve the suffering of people who needed to be quarantined, who may have been sick or who had economic hardship. And we'll fire it back up again if that economic hardship is of deep, deep levels and for a long time. That's my little soapbox, Mr. Chairman. Everything else that we've been working on this week largely is associated with the Webster Street land sale. So where we are with that is the RFP is done, score sheets are done, the advertisement is drafted, the deadlines have been identified and the cost of the advertisement. Remember that clause we talked about, the land had to be valued using a method approved or accepted by the profession? The town assessors working on this. It is difficult to arrive at a valuation of vacant commercial or industrial land. So she's going to do the best she can to find comps and document them and work it that way. I still anticipate that she would arrive at a value before the end of this week or early next, that we would be posting to the central register and to the newspaper with enough time for this transaction to occur in August. This is everybody's expectations.
Good.
All right? Because it has to be in the central register for 30 days.
Not to tee this up too much for you, Matt, but I imagine the food program that we put together, you put together, you need to report that to FEMA for reimbursement?
There are a lot of levels of reporting. One is, some of that we believe is FEMA reimbursable, and we're going to go after that piece. So everything that was driven by the emergency itself, so bringing food to people who were COVID positive and quarantined, FEMA covers. Other expenses that may not be as directly obvious, bringing food to seniors who were shut-ins at home because we didn't want them to go out shopping, FEMA might have reimbursed that, but CARESAC definitely will. So we went for CARESAC for that. So on the last circle, and this is, to me, one of the most important circles ever, we asked the public to donate to this program. Those dollars are even more precious because they're gifts to town government to supply the needs of people. And we were going to spend the gifts first before we spent any taxpayer money at all. So I'll be buried in manure before I allow somebody to take somebody else's gift and spend it on something we didn't use or had no intention of using. And if they can't track or prove what happened to it, baloney. Those gifts were given by people out of the generosity of their heart to help their fellow Douglas residents through a tough time. And that's our, that's a fiduciary duty, if you ask me, to manage those funds appropriately.
So to report that, you do now have the information you need to feel confident as you attest to the...
No, our filing's been held up until this gets resolved. And our request for documents, we have, every email we ever sent started in May. Today is June 23rd. We only got the stuff we asked for Friday.
Are you asking or suggesting that the board should open an investigation now? Or is that something that can wait until the next meeting?
I think you wait because you have the conversation and decide what you want to do.
Right. Inventory is one of the most basic policies, that if you're spending tax dollars on something, you should be able to account for that something.
Well, the, I've had the, I've had the privilege of sitting in on the EOC meetings and I actually delivered some of the meals, as did my wife, and, you know, watched how the program had been going on. And I think the biggest thing, my frustration has been building throughout the course of this, listening to the same thing, you know, sent email, no answer, sent email, no answer, sent email, no answer. It's time, and I've been sitting on this for years, is that the school district's going to be held accountable. It's just, I'm done. It, my frustration started even before all of this, when Matt's trying to put budgetary numbers together, saying, how much do you spend on office supplies? It's multiple asks before you finally get something. All right, well, we're going to try and do the Tellstone contract. And again, it's multiple asks before they finally come up with something. And I think that they've been allowed to operate feeling that they're in their own little vacuum and we just have to fund them. And I'm sorry, they're getting taxpayers' dollars and the time has come that they're going to be held accountable for what they do.
So who will be at this meeting next week?
I invited the...
Invitation, yeah.
Yeah, I invited the school committee, the food services director, the business manager, and the new superintendent.
Have you met him, her, him?
Him.
I don't know if we've heard...
So you, how long's he been on the job?
Couple of days. An email went out to parents.
So if that, so...
I don't know, why doesn't that be the first thing you do is go say hi to the people in town hall?
You know, one of the, I can say this is...
I'm sure he's a great guy.
He doesn't have a fob, so you have to knock.
Depending on how he's wired, it could be the very best thing that could happen to him because he's genuinely going to walk in with his eyes wide open and see exactly what he's going to be managing moving forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess one of the possible solutions we look at if we don't get the answers we want in the next meeting and the answers to the questions that you're asking, and I'm glad you're asking them and you should be, is we'll just do an investigation every time. I mean, if that's, if you want to play hardball, then we'll play hardball. If somebody in your position asks for numbers in a reasonable amount of times, there isn't an answer, fine, we'll do an investigation. And as you so eloquently read, that'll be printed in the town report. And if that's what we have to do to get the point across, then that's what we'll do. There may be an answer to this. I don't know what it is. I hate to prejudge anything. And everyone should have their ability to come in and talk and give their side of the story. That's what we're all about. But I think when the town administrator asks for numbers that should be easily obtainable, I don't think it should take a multitude of emails to get those numbers.
Well, I think if we're going to be printing investigations, my gut tells me if we're going to print them into the town report, you better get used to the town report being about as thick as War and Peace.
Well, I think the next step along that, if we have to do multiple investigations is whose budget...
Just write very succinctly.
Whose budget does the cost of those investigations come out of? And I think that's probably another step down the road that we need to look at.
Yeah. All right, I'm now officially off of my rant. I think I've kicked shins multiple times this evening. I'll stop now.
That was the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
Morris, aye. Good evening, gentlemen.